To take a moment of silence for Walter Coswell, a retired English teacher passed away recently, and Mary Ferrar, a retired man teacher, passed away also.
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, if we could move to superintendent's report for point 01.
Thank you very much, President McFarland, members of the Wapanger Central School District community, as well as our Board of Education. We are very pleased for the superintendent's report. This evening, I am going to introduce Ms. Denise Dzowsky from Dutchess Boces. If you please come up, talk about our student of distinction, please.
Thank you, Dr. Bonk and the board for having us here tonight. We are so proud. We wanted to honor Jayden Lipscomb this evening. He is a student of yours.
Could you hold on? We can't hear you. Hang on one second.
I thought I could hear myself really well.
Thank you.
So, thank you all for having us here. We wanted to come tonight and recognize Jayden Lipscomb. He is a student of Wapengers who has been attending the Spackenkill High School Boces 1211 program and has been doing phenomenally. And I'd like to introduce his teacher, Mrs. Pam Nester, who has a few words to say about him.
I'll try to stand up here, but I actually don't. I don't even need a mic. Jayden is probably not thanking me for being here right now. He's probably really frustrated with me and annoyed, but that's because it winds up that the best students are the ones that really don't want the recognition. And when Jayden first entered our program, he was introverted and he lacked a lot of academic confidence to an extreme degree. It's changed over the last three years, and he's developed his innate talent for art. He's been refining that with the head of the Art Department at Spackenkill High School. Art is his passion, and it's been his focus during all of his spare time. He's already secured himself several commissions in the area of graphic art, and his work was featured in the Spackenkill Art Show. He's a role model for all of our other students because they see that although art is his focus, and he doesn't really want to go to the classes he has to, like statistics and economics, he perseveres and does it anyway. And instead of just doing it, he just happens to excel in them. So that makes him an even greater role model to the rest of my students. I've watched him become a forward-thinking young man and a man who seeks out friendships with like-minded people and considers how his actions today are going to affect his life going forward. He thinks about the impact he's going to have on himself, the impact his choices will have on himself, and how his choices affect other people, and how he can impact them in a good way going forward. I don't know what the future holds for him, but I do know, and I feel confident in the fact that whatever obstacles he has to cross going forward, he has the tools and the wherewithal to do so. And for that reason, I nominated him for student of distinction. Thank you.
Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Not only do you have the certificate from Dutchess Boces, but you also have the certificate from the Wapanger Central School District and our Board of Education. Thank you, Denise. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for being with us, you and your family, Jayden. Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Moving on to 5.01, public comments on the agenda items. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? No one signed up, so we will waive the reading. Moving on to 5.02, communication announcements received by the Board of Education. Cheryl?
Yes, first, I'd like to congratulate both the John Jay and Royce Ketchum football teams. They ended the regular season last weekend. John Jay defeated Marinac 28 to 7 and will be going into postseason play versus Mount Vernon on November 7th at 4:30 in the afternoon. Ketchum defeated Mount Vernon 7 to 6 on Friday evening, and they will be going into the sectional playoffs this Friday at North Rockland. I'd also like to congratulate Ketchum High School on having a fantastic homecoming weekend with the combination of the football game and, yes, Hall of Fame inductions, as well as a wonderful bonfire on Thursday night where almost all student organizations were represented, and a great dance on Saturday. I also want to congratulate members of the RCK and John Jay Cross Country Teams for their performance in the Section 1 Northern Counties race last weekend. Several of the students medaled. I wasn't sure exactly where the cutoff is for medals, so I'm going to highlight the students for both schools that finished in the top 20. There were close to 150 runners for the boys. For Ketchum, Matt Kowalczek finished 8th, Isaac Menjivar finished 9th, and George Soika finished 13th. For John Jay, Amon Curly came in 14th, and Owen Brown finished 20th. For the girls, Ketchum's Abby Kowalczek won the meet. In fact, she finished over a minute ahead of her closest competitor. And teammate Elizabeth Del Rosso finished 10th. For John Jay, Paige Sullivan had a strong run, finishing 12th, and Allison Lovinheimer finished 18th.
Thank you for that. Keith Otoms?
Just wanted to congratulate the RCK Women's Swim Team. They participated in their sectional meet on last week, and they did a very good job. And also, the RCK Orchestra went ensemble last week. They toured around the secondary schools, and they played for the students. And then that evening, the RCK, they had the concert chorus concert for the orchestra, the band, and the chorus last Wednesday evening.
Thank you, Keith. Anyone else? Okay, I'm sorry, John? Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much, President McFarland. Along the lines of what Trustee Otoms just spoke about, the John Jay, a combination of multiple John Jay bands and orchestras, did a great job with the Pumpkin Pops. This past week, very enjoyable concert, super, you know, high-level performance, very enjoyable. I'll go back to when my students were in junior high school, and I would say to somebody at, you know, 4:45, getting towards the end of the day, you know, oh, they're like, oh, you probably want to get out of the orchestra. I was like, no, actually, I'm going to stay late, and then I'm going to go straight to, you know, straight to my kid's concert. And they would say things, you know, from out of state, like, oh, I'm sorry you had to endure that. That is not the case at all in any of our schools with music programs. We have hats off to the students and the teachers. And what is really nice about the Pumpkin Pops concert is the students get into Halloween costumes, and then elementary school students from around the district are invited up to do a parade across the stage, as this year was the orchestra play while they had the costume parade. So congratulations to all involved in that. Similarly, earlier this month, we had a John Jay alumna, actually, a second-generation alumna, come in and give a presentation. That's Marissa Renee Lee. She is, amongst other things, an author. Her book is called Grief is Love, and through a grant that Mr. Ziff's office secured, Renee, who, as I said, is a second-generation John Jay alum, and also a Harvard University alum, as well as a former White House appointee and many other things, came in and worked with our students. Thank you for making that happen, Mr. Ziff. Similarly, our, congratulations to all the John Jay and this past Friday night, Royce Ketchum honorees, but thank you to our athletics administration and building-level administration for having the first Thomas McCready Wapinger Central School District Athletics Hall of Fame induction in several years. It was very nicely done and certainly well-appreciated by, at this point, relatively young alumni and alumna that it was a pleasure to meet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Dr. Bonk, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing further, President McFarland. I think it's all been covered.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to 5.03, committee reports. So let's do capital improvement. Eddie Slushour is the chair of that committee.
Thank you, President McFarland. So I'd myself, one member, trustee Johnson, trustee Capilari, Dr. Bonk, Assistant Superintendent Lokeema, and our Director of Facilities, Ron Broas. So just some quick updates, just to housecleaning items. Both athletic field sound systems are currently underway for installation. We anticipate having them installed within the next two weeks. Also, our new sound system here in the auditorium for productions, shows, and so forth, that also should be completed within the next two weeks as well. So finally making some progress on both of those projects. We did have some repair work to be done here at Wapengers Junior High. Unfortunately, there was some concrete issues with curing. Contract had to come back and replace and repair. That has been completed. I did mention, I think at a previous meeting, we were doing the kitchen hoods. Unfortunately, those can't be replaced during the school year, so we're holding that off until the summer. We also had mentioned, we were in discussions for the Mental Health Service Clinic to be built out here at the junior high school. Still some things that need to be worked out. We did have our architects, excuse me, drew up some plans. That was submitted to review, so that project is still in the works. I will give everyone, hopefully, more of an update the beginning of 2025. Also, just want to let everybody know that the main bus garage here at Wapengers Junior High is currently going to be under renovation. So just to let everyone know that we have some temporary trailers with HVAC, internet, and restrooms to be provided for our drivers and staff. Hopefully, the weather is on our side, and we can get a lot of work done sooner rather than later. And our next meeting is November 13th, 9:30, at the RCK Annex, if anyone from the public is interested in attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slushour. Legislative Action Committee, the chairperson is Marie Johnson, and I apologize, she is not with us this evening. She's not feeling well. So we'll move on to Policy Committee. The chair is Peggy Kellen.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, October 2nd. Attending were John Lumia, Cheryl Miggs, Darren Lokeema, Alberta Pedro, and myself. We reviewed the charter of the committee, adopted the state regulation, new state law regarding breastfeeding in the workplace, and also adopted a policy that dealing with reserve funds, which is an element of budgeting for school districts. As you may know, the state limit on reserves is 4% maximum and 2% minimum, which is an extremely stringent area in which to wind up after your year. We have many expenses that are not anticipated. For instance, during the COVID epidemic, we had a lot of expenses. And then when state and federal funds came in, all of a sudden, we used them up, so we had more money for a short time. Therefore, the Audit Committee wanted to put something on policy in regard to specific reserve funds, and that was adopted. And the Audit Committee will now be giving closer attention to reserve funds. We continued our three-year review of existing policies, and you will find those on the new policies which we will be adopting tonight, hopefully. Those were only changes dealing with terminology and grammar. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Moving on to the Curriculum Committee, Dr. Carwell.
I'm going to stand on this side so I don't get the echo following the speaker. The Curriculum Committee met on, very soft, the Curriculum Committee met on October 9th. The board members that were present included Cheryl Miggs, Peggy Kellen, and John Lumia. Jenny Chanel and teachers at the elementary and secondary level presented local Native American history. Native American history, inclusive of local Native American history, is primarily taught in the 4th grade, 7th grade, and 11th grades. However, there are many teachers that do touch upon local American history throughout grades K through 12, through assembly programs, guest speakers, field trips, and read alouds. They share many examples of how they are continuing to gather resources and looking for opportunities in which to provide local Native American history to our students at all levels, knowing that it is important for our students to understand the local history in the various towns and villages that comprise of the Wapinger Central School District.
Thank you, Dr. Carwell. Moving on to the Wellness Committee. Ms. Ding? I'm sorry, she's absent this evening also. So we'll have to move that forward. How about New York State School Board Association Convention? Ms. Johnson was there, Ms. Miggs was there, Dr. Bonk was there. Do you have anything to report, Doc? Peggy, please.
Trustees Cheryl Miggs, Marie Johnson, and I went to the pre-convention law conference. It was very valuable. These law conferences touch on things which we deal with all the time in executive session issues and in policy. As Policy Chair, I also, during the regular convention, which was the next two days, attended a number of issues on attendance, Title IX, DASA, and areas like that. There were many streams of workshops, and I specialized in those. Mrs. Miggs specialized in AI, and I'm sure she'd like to tell you about that.
Yes, as Mrs. Kellen said, I attended a number of AI workshops, including one on AI policy, and I've already started filling trustee Kellen in for as we consider our district policy. I have to tell you, there are a lot of exciting and, on the other hand, scary things going on with AI innovation. Trustee Kellen and trustee Johnson and I got to witness a conversation with the first humanoid AI robot who has been granted personhood and country citizenship, and I believe has also been issued a credit card. And trustee Johnson and I had a chance to interact with the robot afterward. And like I said, it is awe-inspiring and frightening at the same time. But there are a lot of ways that the way we do things, the way our students learn, are going to be impacted over the next few years and at a very rapid rate by the progress that's being made in AI.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else?
Thank you. I just would like to make a correction. Earlier, I said the RCK Women's Swim Team, actually, this is the first year, is a combined team of John Jay and RCK, and they call themselves the Titans, and they participated in the sectionals over the weekend. So they did very well, and I just want to make a correction, it's a combined team.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ms. Lumia?
Just one comment, the curriculum. I'd like to thank Dr. Carwell, as well as the presenters on the American Indian culture. It's really, really well-presented, and I really learned a lot. So thank you, Dr. Carwell, and thank you to all the presenters.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd also like to comment on the Curriculum Committee meeting, which was very informative, and it again illustrated the importance of field trips, especially in areas which are like local history, in which we are very strong in having museums and sites locally that children can go to. So that reinforces my belief in field trips.
Thank you for that information, Peggy. Dr. Bonk, would you like to take a comment?
Thank you. I also attended the NISPA conference over the past weekend and early next week, last week, excuse me, and was very, very pleased to participate in a number of sessions that dealt with the potential change in graduation requirements. My sense is that the state is moving in the direction, as has been indicated in multiple pathways, one degree with multiple credentials. So these were some of the sessions that I was involved in, in trying to get an understanding as to how that may roll out in the future. But that is certainly something that was covered during the conference, and I'm sure you're going to be seeing more information about that in the news in the days to come. So it was a great conference, and I appreciated the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bonk. Appreciate that information. Cheryl?
Yes, I just had a question for Dr. Bonk for the public. The regions are supposed to be meeting in a few weeks, and we'll be making further announcements. Can you let everyone know the approximate timeframe for that?
The comments are still out in the field in regards to the graduation requirements, so they're still taking public comment on that. My understanding is that there's going to be a meeting to discuss tentatively set for December, and then after that, the plan is to basically indicate their plan as far as moving forward. So again, be apprised of that information. You should be seeing that in the news, as I said, probably more so in December than in November. But there will be articles in regards to what is being planned by the state.
Thank you again. All right, moving along to the Consent Agenda 6.01.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated, 6.02, 6.03, 6.04, 6.05, 6.06, 6.07, 6.08, 6.09, 6.10, 6.11, 6.12, and 6.13.
Motion? Motion, John Lumia, seconded by Peggy. Discussion on it? All in favor? unanimous?
I see seated in the back of the auditorium, our appointed Director of Transportation, who has been in that role for a period of time, and I want to congratulate Mr. Andy Rivera on being formally appointed as Director of Transportation. I see that he's here with his family. Congratulations, Dr. Rivera.
New business, 7.01, John Jay High School Press Box renovation, secret type 2 action number, action.
Whereas the Board of Education of the Wapinger Central School District or Board proposes a capital improvement project consisting of construction of improvements to and reconstruction of its John Jay High School press box, including apparatus, upper tendencies, and incidental improvements and expenses in connection therewith, project, and whereas the proposed project constitutes a replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of an existing facility that qualifies as a type 2 action set forth in 6 NYC RR, Part 617.5, State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA, and whereas the Board has considered the information and documentation which describes the design and intent of the proposed project. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapinger Central School District, based upon the record before it, including the general, special, and detailed knowledge of the Board of the proposed project, be in accordance with R E further in environmental review of the project.
Motion?
No. No, there is no dollar amount.
Given that I'm not an environmental attorney or any other type of attorney, I would still offer the opinion that the answer to that is no, because this has to do with environmental review of the project and not any budgeting-related kinds of things.
Right, that's it.
We are approving the project, are we not?
No, no, we are approving, we are, because we, school districts are not obligated to do secret acts. We don't have to go through that process.
We're classifying the project, not approving the project. I agree with you. If we were approving the project, we'd want to have a dollar amount in there, but we're not, this motion is not doing that. My non-legal binding.
Remember, we always have to do secret comes first before.
You're right. Thank you.
Before the Board.
All right, so we had a motion from Eddie, seconded by Peggy. All in favor? unanimous? 7.02, exceptions of the 2024-2025 New York State Annual Fire Safety Inspection.
Whereas a New York State Code enforcement officer from Bruce Benjamin Associates has completed has completed the 2024-2025 New York State Annual Fire Safety Inspections of the Wapenu Central School District's buildings on September 18th, 2024, and whereas Bruce Bingham and Associates has identified non-conformance items in some of the district's buildings, and whereas the Wapenu Central School District immediately addressed these items, and there are no outstanding non-conformance items at this time. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby accepts the Wapenu Central School District's fire safety inspection report and directs the district clerk to publish the required notice of report availability in its official newspapers pursuant to education law P-07-A, 5B, and C.
Motion by John Lumia, second by Peggy Kellen. Any discussion on it? Dr. Bonk?
Thank you, President McFarland. As you are aware, the safety and security of our students and staff remains our top priority. I would like to thank Director Broas, all of our head custodians, as well as our building principals, for making sure that we have a safe environment for our students and for our staff. Obviously, we have 15 buildings. Some of the buildings are older than others, with our newest building built in 1969. And I would like to thank them for all of their diligence and dedication to make sure that everything is in order and that everything is safe. So Director Broas, I'd like to thank you, along with the head custodians, as well as our building principals. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Bonk. Thank you, all the facilities people, and Ron Broas. Thank you very much. We got a vote on this now. So we have John Lumia with nomination. Peggy, all in favor? unanimous. 7.03, approval to attend the annual regional dinner.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following board members to attend the 47th Annual Regional Dinner for Board Members and Superintendents, funding the future, on November 14th, 2024, at Tilly Forster Farm in Brewster, New York, at a cost of $80 per person and any reimbursement for mileage travel as per board policy. Attending the event will be our Board President, Mike McFarland, and Trustee Peggy Kellen, and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Dwight Bonk, will also be attending.
Motion? Motion. John Lumia, second. John Morgan, all in favor? unanimous. 7.04, approval of waiver of conflict of interest.
Whereas the Board of Education of the Wapenu Central School District, Wapenu, hosts in part the Pathways to Technical College and High School Program, PTEC, for the Duchess Voces, and whereas Duchess Voces is seeking legal counsel, legal advice and counsel regarding, but not limited to, the drafting of any memorandum of understanding or agreement, and the development, implementation, expansion, and ongoing operation of the Pathways to Technical College and High School Program, PTEC, and whereas Thomas, Drohan, Waxman, Pedigree, and Maile LLP presently represents both Wapenu's and Duchess Voces as general counsel. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapenu Central School District waives any potential conflict of interest that might otherwise exist and authorizes TDWPM to provide legal advice and counsel regarding, but not limited to, the drafting of any memorandum of understanding or agreement, and the development, implementation, expansion, and ongoing and ongoing operation of PTEC, and be it further resolved that the Wapenu's Board authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute the waiver of potential conflict of interest in the form on file with the district clerk.
Motion? Virgil. Sorry, Peggy, seconded. Discussion on this? No. All in favor? unanimous. 7.05, approval of and revise of the Wellness Committee Charter.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the Wellness Committee Charter as amended.
Motion? Peggy? Keith? All in favor? unanimous. 7.06, approve the new club charter, Gayhead Elementary School.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the new club charter for the Grizzly Ski Club at Gayhead Elementary School as submitted.
Motion? Peggy, second. John Morgan, any discussion on this? All in favor? unanimous. 7.07, approval of transfer agreement between Gayhead ES Grizzly Ski Club Logo.
Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the proposed transfer agreement for a logo designed for the Grizzly Ski Club at Gayhead Elementary School and finds its terms acceptable to the school district. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the transfer agreement authorizing the transfer of all intellectual property rights of the Grizzly Ski Club logo to the Wapenu Central School District and further authorizes the Board President to execute the attached transfer agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the new Gayhead Grizzly Ski Club logo and does hereby waive the first reading and adopts revisions to Exhibit 5260-E.1 Official Marks effective October 29th, 2024, as requested by Principal James Daly.
Motion? John Morgan. Peggy Kellen, second. Discussion on this? All in favor? unanimous. 7.08, approval of the transfer agreement between Fishville Plains ES Panther Pride Logo.
Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the proposed transfer agreement for a logo designed by Custom Sportswear Inc. for Fishville Plains Elementary School and finds its terms acceptable to the school district. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the transfer agreement authorizing the transfer of all intellectual property rights of the Panther Pride Logo to the Wapenu Central School District and further authorizes the Board President to execute the attached transfer agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the new Fishville Plains Elementary School Panther Pride Logo and does hereby waive the first reading and adopts the revision to Exhibit 5260-E.1 Official Marks effective October 29th, 2024, as requested by Principal Amy Fazio.
Motion? John Morgan, second by Peggy. All in favor? unanimous. 7.09, second reading of approval of policies.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapenu Central School District hereby approves the second reading of the policies.
As stated.
Motion? John Lumia, second by Peggy. All in favor? unanimous. Any requests for additional agenda items?
Yes. I'd like to request two additional items added to the agenda for this evening.
Motion? Peggy, second by John Lumia. All in favor? unanimous.
Item one, individual contract addendum, paragraphs one and two.
Motion? Eddie, second by Mr. Morgan. All in favor? Anyone against? Mr. Lumia? Sorry, motion carries?
Individual contract addendum, paragraphs three and four.
Motion? John Morgan. Peggy Kellen, second. All in favor? unanimous.
Paid administrative leave as stated.
Motion? John Morgan, second by Peggy. All in favor? unanimous. 9.01, comments from the public. Anyone signed up for public comment? All right, if you just give me one second, sir. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to listen to public comments. Although the state law does not require us to hold a public comment session period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is critical for us to hear from the community members about their concerns and issues. The Board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a debate or a dialogue. Please do not expect the Board to respond to your concerns or your questions tonight. We take your concerns and your questions seriously and want to have significant time to process and research any of the issues, if need be. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the public, through the use of public comment forum, which may be obtained online or at the desk with the district clerk. We will have the proper staff member get back to you with an appropriate answer. I also want to point out that under the State and Federal Privacy Law Act, bless you, under the State and Federal Privacy Law, we are unable to address any comments, questions about specific students, schools, or personnel. We would also ask that you go through appropriate administrative channels. A total of 30 minutes at the beginning and of the board meeting is set aside to allow for public comments or agenda items only. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited only to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting are asked to provide their name and specific agenda item which, which is about you, which you are about to speak on. A sign-in sheet is located at the desk of the district clerk. Individual comments on the agenda items are listed, limited to three minutes, and are welcome. If you wish to address items relating to our school district that are not on tonight's agenda, another comment period is provided at the end of the meeting for that purpose. A second sign-in sheet is available for non-agenda items. In the interest of civility and respect for different points of views, clapping, booing, or disturbance of any kind is prohibited in public comment period and is not permitted. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Ethan Kelly, and I have a proposal that I would like to read to all of you. SSAR recently conducted an anti-bullying forum to bring awareness to the signs, causes, and solutions of bullying amongst students. Through this experience, I met Ms. Shawnee, who is Ms. Nevada, an anti-bullying advocate and attorney. She participated as a panelist and keynote speaker, and through this event, I had the opportunity to interact with her. Her advocacy, own personal experience combating bullying, and overall perspective in addition to local leaders were not only educational but very inspirational. I was among 75 students in attendance who were deeply, were impressed and deeply moved by the activity. In preparation for the upcoming International Day of intolerance, I with SSAR would like to inquire of the Board of Education to host a dialogue with Ms. Nevada, who will be in attendance to support students for anti-bullying. The intent is to create a safe environment for students to address concerns about bullying, and through dialogue, break down barriers of race, religion, ethnicity, social status, and age. I would like to promote an atmosphere of respect and acceptance, which the students will be able to more openly address issues that often go undetected. Ms. Nevada's message of resilience and compassion can serve as a powerful catalyst for change, encouraging students to stand against bullying and promote a culture of kindness. The hope is to carry out this event on Friday, November 8th, for a one-hour discussion on bullying, including questions and answers. This may be done for the whole student body or among classrooms for whom it is most befitting. Once again, I am Ethan Kelly, a student at John Jay High School, and am actively involved in a volunteer service through SSAR, which stands for Saving the Earth from A to Z, and STAR means Students Take Action Right Now, a student volunteer group of the World Mission Society, Church of God. I am excited to collaborate with the school to carry out this event and look forward to a positive response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to make a motion, 10.01, to adjourn the meeting. So Eddie, second. Virgil, all in favor? Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Resolved that the Board of Education